Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're back for Council Ordinance 24-0521, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. To my left, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District Member of the Committee. To my right, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District. And Council Vice President Sharon Green-Milton, 6th District Member of the Committee. To my immediate right, Tony Leva, Staff to the Committee. We're joined by Representatives from the Mayor's and the Council President's Office. We are here for broadband and digital equity, as well as the Chief Data Officer. I'm going to turn it over to City Administrator Leach to cover the Chief Data Officer portion.
Awesome. Thank you so much Chairman Costello. Good afternoon Chairman Costello and members of the City Council. My name is Faith Leach and I serve as the City's Chief Administrative Officer. Today, I am sitting in on behalf of our Chief Data Officer. The role is currently vacant and we are in the final stages of hiring for this critical role. But the work continues through our Digital Services Team, who you will hear from today, as well as our Open Data Lead. So, as I mentioned, you will hear directly from Chanelle, who leads the Digital Services Team, which is under the Chief Data Officer, as well as our Open Data Lead. But the vision and mission of the office is to help deliver high-quality products and services to Baltimore residents by centering resident experience and integrating modern design, product, and technical approaches into service delivery. I'm now going to turn it over to Chanelle, who's going to walk through some of the work of the Digital Services Team.
Thank you, CIO Leach. Next slide, please. For the Digital Services Team, our staffing and budget line items are ARPA-funded. Ooh, thank you. Staff salaries consist of about 81% of our budget. We currently have three team members: me, the Director, a lead UX designer, and another designer on the team with an opening for the technical lead position. We are actively interviewing for this position and hope to have it filled in the next coming weeks. The Technology and Consulting Services Budget Line Item consists of 16% of our budget and although it's currently unused, we plan to use this line to increase capacity of user experience designers in the city. The remaining budget line items consist of staff training and professional development, as well as admin expenses, all of which we plan to use by the end of the funding period. We have actually used some of this for things such as professional certifications and courses relevant to our work. Moving on to what we have accomplished within our first year of existing, we were able to partner with DOT to modernize the special events application process. Prior to the existence of the digital application on job form, applicants were required to go in-person to apply for a special events permit for their events. We also created fillable online PDFs of supplemental forms to make it easier for applicants to complete them and provide complete applications to the permit text. On the special events website, we created a dynamic requirements checklist for users to answer basic questions about their events, to essentially be told which type of permit to apply to and which supplemental forms and additional information will be required by them to submit a complete application, as well as what to expect as far as application review time. Because of these changes, over 300 digital applications have been submitted since the launch last April. With the in-person options still available, there has been a 200% increase in special event permit applications, thus leading to more permitted legal events being held in the city. We also partnered with BSIT and DOF to create and launch online payment options for application fee, deposit, and final invoice payments of these special event permits, saving the applicant's time and money from going in-person to apply, also waiting around to be helped by a busy permit text, paying for parking, and paying fees in the form of cash or check only. Next, we also partnered with the Office of Emergency Management to build the OEM GIS Center via ArcGIS, which unifies over 100 data layers. The GIS Center eliminates the OEM team from relying on separate multiple sources for information during emergencies, such as 311 data, census data, things of that sort, and instead giving them the ability to better visualize impacted areas in the breadth of impact during emergencies. We also delivered a 63-page emergency communications user research report product to OEM, just providing insights on the best ways and methods to effectively communicate emergency information and next steps to constituents. Because of these recommendations and findings, we are currently working with the OEM team to strategize partnerships with resilient hubs, Pratt libraries, and faith-based organizations to better disseminate unified information to the public. For the city website redesign, we are partnering with BSIT to design the homepage of the website, as well as the permit directory effort with the end goal of providing information on all permits and licenses that people can apply for across the city. We're also working closely with BSIT developers to build these pages as they are designed. Lastly, the Digital Services Team partnered with DHTD to evaluate the usability of the permitting pages, which in turn informed design changes needed for a better user experience. We also shadowed DHTD permit texts to better understand their pain points and commonly asked questions. Then we worked closely with DHTD members to implement these design changes on the website. Once the design changes were in place, we conducted usability testing with actual users, such as contractors and homeowners, to gauge impact of these design changes and suggest additional changes as needed. The publishing to the website of these additional changes are currently pending DHTD approval, so the additional changes are not yet live. I'll pass it off to Deputy Director of OPI, Jason Howard, to give the Open Baltimore update.
Hello, everyone. You're all familiar with Open Baltimore, but as a reminder, it's a public-facing data portal with a wide variety of data sets related to city services and issues. It's overseen by the Chief Data Officer, but maintained by a few folks in BSIT with support of agency data stewards. There are no full-time employees devoted to this resource. However, we currently have an OPI data fellow, Rosalind David, sitting next to me, who's focusing her fellow project on making enhancements, improvements, things that wouldn't otherwise be prioritized. Just for a few stats on Open Baltimore, there are about 150 city-owned data layers, with a few more from our partnering organizations like BNEA. And on top of that, there are numerous reports, text documents, and data dashboards to explore. And we're seeing about 9,000 uses per week, so it is a popular resource. And many of these resources, 28 of them are updated at least weekly. Some of them are updated daily, so this is really update current data. And here are a couple of our most popular data sets: Part 1 Crime, Real Property Information, City Employee Salaries. And if it's been a while, here is a data layer in Open Baltimore. This is an example of the 311 customer service requests for this calendar year. This is updated daily. Each dot represents a 311 service request call, or through the app. You can explore the map, you can zoom in, you can click on each dot to learn when it happened, the nature of the request, what it's about, and its status. Not only can you filter and do these things in Open Baltimore, but you can export data to Excel or integrate via API. So lots of different ways to access and use this information. The BSIT staff currently has capacity to ensure that the portal works, Open Baltimore is online, and the data sets are up-to-date. But with the added capacity of a data fellow, we're allowed to focus on some enhancements. And they come in a couple flavors. Number one, improve usability and accessibility, so that Open Baltimore users can navigate and the portal makes sense and they can find what they're looking for. Number two, standardize metadata. The data that we have on Open Baltimore is fantastic and often up-to-date. We need information about that data to give the user context, so it makes sense and they know exactly what they're looking at. And thirdly, increase community engagement. This includes feedback processes from the public straight through the portal, but also community engagement activities, and we've already had a couple this fiscal year. I will also mention briefly the Baltimore Data Academy, something else falling under the Chief Data Officer role. This was built by Hopkins GovX, but monitored by Department of HR. This is a data literacy training program available to all city agencies. In the last fiscal year, we've had about 200 employees enrolled in the courses. There are five courses right now, and in this fiscal year, we've had three additional to the original two. Thank you.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman Isaac Itzey Schleifer, 5th District Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District. City Administrator Leach, can you please, in a sentence or two, describe the job responsibilities of the CDO position?
Yes, the Chief Data Officer is the city's steward of all of the city's data. So this is an enterprise-wide role where they are supporting all of our agencies. They are building data literacy and data capacity within all of our agencies. They're managing large-scale data projects, providing support and assistance to agencies with managing their data. They're responsible for Open Baltimore and ensuring transparency with sharing out of citywide data. So it's a pretty expansive role.
And this person reports to Mr. Carter?
No, they report to me.
And Mr. Carter reports to?
The Deputy City Administrator, but everyone reports to me.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions? And just as a reminder, we're not doing BSIT yet. We're going to go through questions on the CDO and broadband, and then we'll get to BSIT. Council Vice President? Councilman Schleifer? Councilwoman Dorsey? Councilwoman Porter? Councilwoman Ramos?
Excuse me for coming in late, everyone, but the slides that you were just showing, we don't have them.
I submitted them to Council Services earlier this week.
So they're in the SharePoint, right?
They're in the SharePoint drive under the June 6 presentations.
Very good.
We got the June... okay, I'll talk with staff, because we didn't get them.
They were submitted, I believe I uploaded them two days ago.
Any other questions?
If you don't mind, I have a question.
I don't mind at all.
Again, apologies for walking in late. I came in on the slide around the permits, so tell me what's going on there.
Thank you for your question. Yes, for the permitting, are you talking about the slide on DHTD? Yes, we work closely with DHTD, trying to basically get more information out to the users so that they know what's required when they apply for permits. So we made some updates to the webpage around that, but as far as their actual permitting system, we're not involved in that.
BSIT is not involved at all, or the data officer is not involved at all, with their process that they're doing to redo the entire thing?
So just to be clear about what's happening here. So the Digital Services Team, they oversee the user experience. So what they have been assisting DHTD with, and what they've been assisting not even just DHTD, but all of our agencies, is actually going through their webpages and making sure that those pages are more responsive to the needs of citizens, so that citizens can better navigate those pages to find the information that they're looking for. And so that's one of the improvements that they've been working on with DHTD, is until we get a new system through Acela, how do we ensure that users have a good experience? How do we ensure that users know how to navigate and get to the answers to their questions with our current site? And so they have worked with DHTD to come up with some recommendations to update their current site, and then they will be a part of ongoing conversations once we roll out Acela with the user facing the forward-facing front of Acela.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And BSIT is also actively working on the Acela implementation as well.
Which I guess we'll get to during the BSIT plan, so we won't talk about that right now. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we're ready to move to BSIT. So, before we begin... As has been customary since the ransomware attack, we've agreed that there are certain topics that are off limits for this discussion. CIO Carter, thank you for sending this over. I'm going to read this out loud. Dot, dot, dot. "As we discussed before, here are the topics we ask committee members to not pursue in any specific details: Requesting specific details into the 2019 ransomware attack and its findings. As of right now, Baltimore's ransomware attack is still an ongoing federal investigation, and we are limited to what we can say. Requesting specific details regarding Baltimore City's IT security current state or gaps needing remediation. And number three, requesting specific details about infrastructure, applications, or data vulnerabilities or assessments related to the results from these areas." Colleagues, is everyone... Any questions about the off-topic, off-limits? I don't even know what I'm trying to say here. Are there any questions about what I just read? Okay. If anyone asks one of these questions, we are going to...
We will kindly...
You will let me know, and I'll handle it from there. Very good.
We will kindly take it offline, get the question.
Yep. What's that? We're not going to inject anyone today, but it's in spirit, that's correct. Mr. Carter, first and last name of all your folks that are in these seats presenting, including position title, and then take it away.
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Todd Carter. I am the Director for the Baltimore City Office of Information Technology. To my right, I have Leila Layman, our Chief Administrative and Governance Officer. To my left, I have Chris Harrison, our Budget Director. To his left, we have Art Ray, who is the Director for PSEC Applications. To Art's left, we have Tatiana Jones. She is the Intern Director for the 311 Call Center. Behind Tatiana, we have Fabian Dorchus. She is our Legislative Liaison. Behind me, I have Kenya Osley, who is the Director for Broadband and Digital Equity. So with that, we'll get going. The first thing I wanted to talk about is our mission and vision and values. We begin every meeting discussing who we are, what we are about, and what we care about. I'm not going to read these in detail, but I do want to stress that when we have our employee meetings, we ask our employees every time to go through the values and pick the values that mean something to you and tell us how you live those values. It has allowed us to build and drive the culture and change the culture in BSIT, and we have had much success with it. So this is our organization chart. It shows each of the services. I'm going to give a big, broad overview of the budget, and then quickly go through each of the services and comment on those. BSIT mostly, most closely identifies with the following goals outlined in the Mayor's Action Plan: One, close the digital divide once and for all. Two, improve the overall reliability, access, and transparency of the city's financial systems. And three, deliver quality, efficient customer service to all residents through a lens of equity, accessibility, and accountability. In the development of the Fiscal 2025 Budget Proposal, BSIT focused on mitigating the impact of cuts on service delivery and providing high-quality service to city residents, stakeholders, and agencies by focusing on the following priority areas: One, support, secure, and optimize critical infrastructure. Two, improve the customer service experience. Three, cultivate engaged, skilled, and adaptable IT team members. Four, calibrate and cultivate the equity landscape. Five, optimize IT spend and system efficiency. And three, reimagine the digital landscape. In Fiscal Year 2025, BSIT endeavored to align its proposed appropriation with programmatic plans. Notably, the proposed budget abolished a total of three positions, including two call center agent positions budgeted in Service 804, which was the 311 Call Center, and one administrative analyst, a civil position, budgeted in Service 803, Enterprise Innovation and Application Services. All three positions have been vacant for at least two fiscal cycles and do not pose an impact on current and future operations and services. This action produced a projected save of $193,000 annually. In addition, the Fiscal 2025 Budget recommends transferring three positions from the Department of Housing and Community Development. They have two: the Department of Transportation, one to BSIT. These positions will continue to support IT projects in these agencies, but will carry out projects under the guidance and leadership from BSIT housed in our Enterprise Innovation Applications Services. The proposed budget reflects creating two positions under Service 802, IT Division Manager and HR Generalist III. Key reductions reflected in BSIT's 2025 proposal include overall 800K reduction in contractual services, most notably in the ERP cost center and other computer, software, and maintenance support costs. These changes reflect a transition from implementation to ongoing maintenance and support costs associated with the Workday Enterprise System, ERP, and a reduction in computer software and maintenance costs through optimizing IT system and tools. Overall, an overall reduction of $15.1 million in federal, state, and special grant awards is based on the city's citywide change in budgeting grants and is reflective of actual committed grant dollars rather than anticipated grants. This reduction does not reduce the loss of grant funds. So that's my opening statement. I'm going to go through each of these services and briefly highlight a few items. The first item is CityWatch. When you think about CityWatch, as of today, we have 827 cameras at an availability of 98%. We worked hard to automate and improve that reliability metric, and we are confident and feel good about that performance. The CityWatch area also is responsible for joint public safety systems like CAD, the 800 megahertz system, and the 911 technology and systems. Last year, the Council appropriated $2 million to BSIT. Let me show you how that allocation was apportioned and what we've done so far. As you can see, the allocation was in two areas: one, the infrastructure, switches, media converters, wireless antennas, et cetera. It was primarily in the Park Heights area. We spent roughly, to date, $837K. And in the general fund dollars, we spent $940K. That's been encumbered. The contracts are in place. The work is happening. We would certainly just look forward to carry forward, just to continue that work. We expect the capital work to be done in July, and the O&amp;M or general funds work done in September. Administration. Administration provides key management functions for the delivery of projects and administration of budgets, contracts, and invoicing. It also houses our project management organization, which does metric management, PM, program management, and legislative coordination. Our HR function that we are proud of, our employee engagements as measured by our anonymous survey, was 4.3 out of 5, with a net promoter score of 8.23. Application Services. Let me just give a small perspective as to where we've been. I think the council's been in place for some time, since I got here in 2019. When ransomware occurred, we spent a lot of time and focus on security. Then after that, we had to focus on infrastructure. Our third frontier that we're now focused on is applications. This is going to be a challenging year, but a rewarding year from an applications perspective, with the rollout of several systems and the start of several initiatives for applications. So systems that have been completed or ready to roll out. We have the towing management for DOT, the right-of-way permitting for DOT, parking enforcement for DOT, workday improvements, Spanish language for 311, a new website for our residents, blockchain for vacant property title management, a new construction management system. And our brethren over in DPW are implementing a new billing system that should be going live fairly quickly. And last but not least, work in AI. But we also have in Hopper several projects that are occurring as well. Permitting for housing, which we mentioned earlier, a new tax system. The next project we call MID, which is the Municipal ID, as well as towing dispatch. So not only do we have a lot of systems that are rolling out this year, toward the end of next year, we have a number of systems that are rolling out or in queue to roll out as well. Enterprise Delivery. This is our infrastructure area. It houses our security. Our security team focuses on providing practices and policies around security. They've built a defense that allows us to look at seven opportunities to detect and prevent attacks by leveraging the toolsets that we've implemented over the last several years. The infrastructure piece of this service focuses on network and wireless access, PC support and engineering, serviced us, Microsoft 365 suite, and remote and hybrid work support. And the Infrastructure Group implemented a new function called Incident and Problem Management. This allows us to do root cause analysis, so that we can understand where we make mistakes, how we made mistakes, learn from them, and then make movement to improve. I think I skipped a slide. Did I? Yes, I thought so. Sorry about that, 311. We have a very successful and measurable call center. We answer about 46,000 calls per month with a 1.8% average abandoned rate. Our average time to answer a call is nine seconds. And all calls are either... The channels that we have go through either the call center, the web app, the mobile app, as well as the Spanish language line, are the different ways that people can reach out to us. Several months ago, our long-term director, Lisa Allen, left. Do not know if you guys know that. We are happy to announce, however, that we have hired a new 311 Call Center Director starting June 24th. Her name is Jackie Crosby.
Lisa retired?
Lisa did retire.
Oh. Lisa was fantastic. I wish her well.
We have hired Jackie Crosby, who is in the audience today. And that just shows that the... We're excited to have her on the team. She comes from Blue Cross and Blue Shield and brings a wealth of experience that can help us continue to improve. When we think about 311, they have the call taking down Pat. They're working and improving their different channel, the effectiveness of those different channels, but they're also working to help improve the overall effectiveness of the 311 service, partnered with the OPI organization and other agencies. How can we make 311 broadly more efficient, more effective? There are tools in place. There are processes that have been improved, and we're partnering with OPI to better improve the overarching service for 311. Broadband and digital equity. And I know we're going to talk a lot about that in the meeting. The proposed budget reflects that $15.1 million reduction in grant funding due to the citywide change in budgeting for grants. We wanted to put a few of the metrics up for broadband and digital equity. This team has been rock solid in executing. If you know, we started the broadband program. BSIT was brought in like a year and a half or so into it. Kenya Osley and team have done a great job of doing several things: Installing infrastructure at our rec centers, senior centers, and building Wi-Fi zones. As you can see, it's on the screen right there. But also, there's a programmatic side, where we've implemented 27 grant awards to 22 organizations to help us through the digital equity fund. So they have been gauging the community... So they have been engaging the community, they have engaged the legislature here in the state of Maryland and across the country, and are known for the work that we've done. And so, I know that was quick, but Councilman Costello, I think you prefer that we zip through them. So with that, we are completed and welcome your questions.
Thank you. Todd, I just want to thank you. B sit continues to be a high-performing organization, and I think that's directly attributable to your leadership as well as your senior team. I'm nothing but pleased with the progress I continue to see from you every day. Thank you. Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. My question, I guess, deals with page 805, Enterprise IT Delivery Services, and how you, I guess, work with distributing and meeting the needs with your hardware and software for city agencies, including city council. I need you to explain to me your process and how you do your delivery of services for laptops, particularly just a personal example. I had a Word Pro that, one of the original ones, like from 2018, 2019, and it died. And it took a month for me to get a computer, a laptop, an entire month. Vice President of the City Council, a month to get some kind of replacement. So I need to understand why it took so long and what is your process and how, if that happened to me, what's going on? Comment.
Thank you for your question. First, let me apologize for that service that should not have happened to you or anyone else. We have several programs that we use to do a couple of things. One, to refresh devices. We look at laptops, look at desktops on a multi-year cycle, and we have a plan in place and dollars in place to allow us to proactively refresh them. Historically, we have been behind in that for a number of different reasons. So that's sort of the first thing that should have happened is that probably by now, your machine should have been replaced. The second thing in that particular case is you had, and I don't know, we'll look into this, but a ticket should have been drawn up for two things will occur. One, for someone to come out to you to make arrangements to get a new laptop to you, a loner, until they either fix your current device or order you a new device if you were close to that window for refresh. So those are two processes that should have happened, they didn't happen. I can find out why and get back to you. In most cases, we don't have that type of challenge. It should not have happened to you at all. I can also tell you that these are the kind of things that the Incident and Problem Management Team would work to look at that process, see what broke down, and make the appropriate systemic changes for us to provide a better service.
So I was told that you were wait, they were waiting for the vendor to deliver and process?
So there have been several, depending upon the type of machine that's ordered, delays in the ordering process, but that should not have stopped us from getting you a loner until your new device arrived.
Totally agree. That was not offered to me at all. I was without any form of anything for nearly an entire month. I had to work from my aged cellphone.
Again, I totally apologize that it should not have happened in the past. If anything like that happens, feel free to escalate that to me. That should not have happened, but we will look into that, and we will learn and grow from what we did and did not do.
Thank you.
In our sincerest apologies.
Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Todd, I just want to thank you and your team for everything you guys have been doing. You guys have been top-rate professionals, and I don't have any questions today because every time I've ever reached out, you guys have been extremely responsive. You know your stuff inside out, and so we've certainly come a very long way from back in the day when we couldn't get any answers or know what was going on at BCIT, but we can feel and see the changes you've made, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilman Conway? Sorry, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. I, same thing. You guys are great. I don't really have anything to say. I'm just, anything to ask about. I'm thrilled that when you run down the, like, whatever it was, six or seven different things that are coming online, two of those, the tow yard management and the parking enforcement things, these are things that came about as a direct result of our collaboration one-on-one, making these things happen. You know, when we talked like two months ago about further using our vendor who's going to be doing the tow yard management to also be doing towing dispatch for the police department. You told me we needed a buyer, whether it was going to be DOT or BPD to ask BCIT to do this on their behalf, whoever was going to be responsible for that. You didn't just tell me that. You went and you followed up with them. And when I followed up with them a couple of weeks ago, they said, yeah, BCIT reached out to us a couple of months ago, right after that call that we had, and they've already got that in the works. And you guys are just, you're just the best. So thanks for doing what you do.
Thank you.
Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate all the work you're doing, Director. Very, very brief question about a policy change that we know is coming in July. It's my understanding we're no longer going to allow folks to download documents on their personal devices. I'll tell you, that is something I'm severely concerned about because I use my own personal device, particularly because I have another job on top of this, have to run a campaign on top of this, and we can't use city devices to do that. And if I had to lug around three laptops and three phones, I'd be a very unhappy man. So curious about that, and I don't, maybe that's something we can or cannot discuss if it is tied to that, but...
No, no, it's not. We can discuss it now.
Please.
And I anticipated this question because there's been a lot of confusion about this. And let me just step back and say, before we do any type of change that's enterprise-wide, we pilot it with B sit, and then we pilot it with others. And there's been some, I wouldn't say, there's been some confusion about what we are looking to do. The goal is really, how do we safeguard Baltimore City data? That's really the goal. And the goal isn't that you can't save, you can save to your OneDrive. So instead of you saving it to your hard drive that is not backed up, that is not secured, you would just save it to OneDrive. And that's, I think, the distinction that a lot of people have not heard. We know before we roll this program out, we need to do a couple of things. One, pilot it, get real-world experience from not just us, but other agencies in the pilot. Typically, we do an operating agency, and we do more of an administrative agency to get a broad brush. And then secondly, we go through a set of use cases. You know, can I save this way if I'm on my phone? We go through all of those, and in 90% of the cases, it is, okay, you can save to your OneDrive in that, in those instances. And then there are a few use cases we still have to figure out, but we would not roll something out without doing that level of thorough testing, and then also just communication about why we're doing it, but also what we're doing and the impact to each and every employee.
I appreciate that, and I know it's going to be a pretty sensitive situation once we do do it. One of the concerns I have, though, is I am constantly sending documents between myself and my staff and even not my staff, PDFs that I'll put my signature on. And I'm not sure if that offers that opportunity. So I just, I am a little concerned about that prospect and just, I'm not sure what we can do about that.
Can I jump in for a second? So we currently have OneDrive on our desktop and our laptop. You have a desktop and a laptop? So if you notice, when you save something to your desktop on your desktop computer that's physically located in your office?
Oh, forgive me. I do not use a desktop. This is my laptop.
Okay.
I use it for everything.
So if you had a, like, I have a desktop physically located in my office, and when I save something to the desktop on there, which is connected to my OneDrive, when I open up my city-issued laptop here, that file appears on the desktop here. So I want to look at it as you can't save stuff to your computer. You will have a space to save it to. It is just not saved locally on the physical hard drive that's inside of this machine. Did I spell that down appropriately?
Correct.
So you will still be able to, from that laptop, open up an email sent from a city account to your city account and open up an attachment and save that attachment. You will just be saving it to a virtual place.
Correct.
Correct.
So you will not see a difference in how you interact with your computer.
Sort of. I use a Mac, and so it's a little bit wonky on a Mac.
I don't use Apple products.
So with a Mac, there is OneDrive for Macs. I have Macs as well as Windows machines, and it works just the same way. And I think that's what the habit we have to get into. The other habit we need to get into is to leverage SharePoint more and share files as opposed to sending them back and forth. It just gives us, one, it saves on space, but it also just gives a more cohesive command and control of the document and the changes of who makes what to the document. So I would refer the sharing the file versus sending the file. And that way, if you're concerned about your, someone taking your signature and scraping it and then using it, that will limit it, assuming that you're sharing the files with just trusted individuals.
As someone who does this work in my part-time job for the University of Maryland-Baltimore, I assure you that you are not going to see a difference, and you will be accustomed to it in no more than two to three days, knowing how much you're always on your laptop and always firing off emails. It is going to be a seamless experience for you, and this is the direction that most large-scale organizations are moving.
I hope so.
I have a bunch of time on my hands after December, so you can feel free to call me, and I'll walk you through it.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you. I wanted to kind of go through the CAD system. I received notification as of Monday evening that there was a outage of the CAD system, and I wanted to just kind of see, one, because we know the CAD system is about a decade old now, how are you all, how are you all kind of doing quality maintenance for the CAD system and increased funding for the CAD system? Because as more and more people call 311, there's going to be an overload of systems.
So I'm going to start, and then I'll pass it to our PSEC director. So our CAD system is like 12 or so years old. And it's needing replacement. We have support contracts in place as well as a team to support it. We did apply for a federal earmark this year. I don't know if we actually got it yet, but as a way to offset some of the cost to replace the CAD system, which we have estimated, because we did a study on this, to be roughly around $10 million to replace that CAD system. So we're kind of waiting on that and pulling it together by, you know, holding it together with Band-Aids and all. But I'll ask my PSEC director, who was intimately involved with that latest outage and the other outages that we've had with CAD.
Good afternoon. Thank you for that question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we've struggled at times with our CAD environment, i.e. the replacement request, but in the interim, we've implemented some manual processes for checks and validations. We have also escalated with our support vendor to make sure that when something occurs that is of large scale, meaning more than one unit is offline, we escalate quickly. So we are able to bring what happened on Monday, we are able to bring the system up within two hours.
Okay.
And fully functional. And then we don't lose any, and we also make sure that we do not lose any call data. That is the most important piece.
So one of the, so I hear you when you say that. One of the things that comes to my brain is emergency management services. And so when residents call 911 or 311 and they get that automated, you know, they get that automated message, how are we capturing that data? Because oftentimes, while operators may have that number, they may or may not call back, and the dispatching and triaging gets a little wonky there.
So there are two systems, really. There is the 911 system, the telephone system, that call takers answer the 911 calls. That does, that did not go offline at all. All calls were answered and timely as they normally are 24 by 7. What was offline, and we also have a manual process, is the CAD environment. That is where the dispatch of emergency services occurs. But the dispatch is still radio-based as well, so that piece was online also.
But the 311, the 311 and the 911 system interface with the CAD system, so that information that they gather from their calls goes into the CAD system?
Correct.
Okay. So that's the linkage that I'm talking about. So when it goes into the CAD system and there was a malfunction on Monday, what happened to that data that transpired from the dispatchers to the CAD system?
Dispatchers and the call takers use a manual card system.
Ah, okay.
And that is our backup to an outage of that sort. So, and then that card backup system is then put back into the automated CAD system, so no data is lost.
Do you all have any additional dispatchers that are called in during that two-hour lag time?
No, everything was handled with the current staffing.
Okay, which is understaffed, right? And that's more of a 311, 911?
Yeah.
Are you all currently, are you all currently adequately staffed?
I cannot answer the dispatching component.
Yeah, that may be a question for the director, for the 311. Okay, is that the same CA for 911? Yeah, I think so.
911 has possibly 11 vacancies. Laura, can we pull up the vacancies for the 911 call takers?
Yeah, so that manual process there, if there is a reduction in the workflow for 911, I just want to make sure that we're capturing all those emergencies within that two-hour time period. So I wonder if there is an opportunity for us to develop an additional kind of supplement protocol that if there is an outage or something like that that happens, we kind of add in additional workforce to kind of let, get that, you know, because man-made, do you understand what I'm saying? Does that make sense? It's late in the day, so.
Yes, ma'am. I understand, and there are built-in protocols. I don't want to speak completely for 911.
Sure.
As it relates to fire and police, but I know that there are built-in protocols for call downs, if you will.
Okay.
To call in additional resources should the need occur.
Okay. I just want to make sure that if we're, you know, kind of influxing a system, that system overload with those man-made calls can be really tricky.
Scalability, yes, ma'am.
Yep, absolutely. So that's what I was going to reiterate, is that we do have protocols for outages, and there's never, or very highly unlikely, a time where we're not able to switch to either a manual system or go to the radio system. So there are multiple layers that are in place and protocols for when we need to pull those levers. Thank you.
And just to close the loop, as there are currently 17 vacant 911 operators and two vacant 911 operator supervisor positions, and I believe there's active recruitments. I don't know, yes, yes.
Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know what I'm going to ask. Can you confirm the timeline that you gave me before on the Spanish 311? Is it going to be the end of June, end of July?
Yes, so we're still tracking to that. We were actually waiting for these hearings to be completed so we can call in your office to help us with the testing. We didn't want to do it during the actual...
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You know, hearing. So we're ready. We tested it. We have a marketing, and we're welcome for you guys to come in and review that, help us get that as in tip-top shape.
Okay.
So once these are over, we'll work with the MoGor office to send that out, get it set up, but we didn't want to impose upon you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. But no, I'm... Appreciate that. Thank you. But no, I'm excited about it. I'm grateful that you took so much time to get it right. And it was a bit frustrating the last couple of years, but as soon as I knew you were on the case, I knew it was going to get done. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes. With 311, I know we had some hearings a while back where we had decided not to use the word "closed" when someone calls into 311 and either that agency, it gets transferred, really. And the resident is confused, and that's when we get the calls, where the issue has not been resolved. And we have to go through an explanation of what that means. It doesn't necessarily mean closed. It was said that some other language was going to be used for a transfer, basically if it was transferred. So that has not really happened yet.
So just to make sure I understand your question. You're asking, what have we done relative to the language that goes out to our residents in stating whether something is closed or not? And the fact that some things appear to be closed, or we say they're closed and they're not, and then residents call and ask you questions. Is that?
Correct.
Okay. So a couple of things that we have done to work with the "closed equals closed." And I think while we're not quite there, we're on the right track for a couple of reasons. One, we changed the language of the messages that go out to email for a number of the SRs. So instead of getting a blatant, it's been closed, you get a little bit more information other than just that. We haven't done that with all SRs. We've done it with a good majority of SRs that are on the CityWatch system. We can't do that to the CityWorks, I'm sorry. CityWorks system. We can't do that for the CHIPS system or housing system because that's under construction. So that's the first thing we did. And we've seen positive results of that. We have to roll it out to all of the different areas that use CityWorks, but we've seen positive results from that to get that language more crisp in terms of what the outcome was. That's part one. Part two is we built a tool that will allow us to see the mismatches between the status that we have in CityWorks and the status that we have in Salesforce. And when those are mismatches, those are frankly "closed equals closed" situations. And there are a number of reasons why those things can occur. And now we're looking to roll that tool out to the users of the CityWorks application. And we piloted somewhat with DOT where they began to look at, why am I having a discrepancy, you know, between CityWorks status and Salesforce status? And it was, in some cases, a training issue. It was, in some cases, we need to put more controls or change the code. There are a number of reasons why that occurred, but those are a couple of things that we're doing to address the two issues that you mentioned. And I would add, and I mentioned earlier, that 311 has been asked to do much broader, let's help fix the whole 311 process. We're working with OPI to position, because they have built a number of tools that allows us to look at the satisfaction that residents have for specific service orders. And we can begin to target our callbacks, not only to agencies if something is not being done fast, but our callbacks to other residents as well. And so we're working with OPI. We've got tools. We can see and better quantify what that "closed equals closed" really is. We haven't been able to do that before. So those are the things that we're doing to improve the situations that you mentioned.
Thank you for that detailed update. Some things you think are so easy to do, you know, you think computers really have a brain like we do and can just change stuff, but I understand it's a process. And you are working on it.
This has been a problem that has been at, you know, a challenge for us, and we, again, we are partnering with agencies, OPI and others to solve it. So feel free to check up on us over the next several months. You'll see more and more progress.
Thank you.
Madam VP actually took the question I was going to ask you. I appreciate that we're working on it. That's great. And then she made the comment that computers don't think, and it reminded me of AI. We were just talking about that. So what are we doing on AI? Is there any opportunity for us to leverage it in any of our city systems to improve or check or any of that?
So as you know, we did issue, Madam CIO issued, or the mayor issued an executive order for AI, and Madam CIO distributed that to all employees and commissioned two things. One, a council that directly is day-to-day involved with AI, and then two, an advisory group. And so those two groups are working on several things. One, let me back up before I get on what they're working on. We have to be careful about diving too fast, too quickly into an emerging technology. So that's why we didn't put, like, here is Baltimore City's policy. We said, here are some guidelines that you need to follow. And so given that, we have a couple of things that we're working on. One, training for leadership on the policy itself, as well as generative AI in general, as well as working with HR for training for employees. In addition to that, we're working with Morgan State University and JHU. We haven't formalized work with JHU, but asking them to help us figure out how to develop the right ethical uses of AI. And then thirdly, we've worked with our consultants to help us to understand the various use cases for AI and the value of that. Because we don't want every agency, we don't want to try to control it, but we don't want every agency to go out and just start spending money on AI. Let's do it in a more planful way where we can see and recognize the benefits. And so where we are right now is at that point where the training with HR is being formulated. The training from Morgan is being reviewed. We have a set of use cases that we've gotten from our consultants. We'll package that up together. We'll work with the administration and figure out, here are the next steps and the timeline for that. So we're very active with the AI space, and it's not just BSEC. It's law, it's HR, it's many other agencies across the government, as well as all kinds of different references that we have for other cities and what they're doing. And we find that we are just on track with them by not taking an overly aggressive, risky approach to AI.
And you mentioned we're working with Morgan. I know they just got a big federal grant. Are we at all tied in with that effort or?
I'm not aware of the grant that they've got or that we're tied into it. I know that we literally just had one of our weekly updates that did not come up. We can look into that and get back to you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you. In your pretty long list of items and projects that you're working on, I was happy to hear about the, I learned yesterday that you're working on the municipal ID. So can you tell me the timeline on that and if we do have a budget allocation already to move it forward? Last time when we talked to MLCFS about this last year and even during the hearing the other day, there was a lot of planning still going on, lots of research going on, which is fine. But this is something that, you know, should have been done a long time ago. So I'm just curious as to where you are now with the timeline.
Sure. So the last time we were in front of you and talked about this, I believe it was this year at some point in time.
At some point, yeah.
And at that time, MLCFS was leading it, and they were looking to get a consultant in to help them pick the vendor, and then we were going to move forward. As they lost a key individual who was leading that project, we work with MLCFS, and we've taken the lead now.
Which I'm very happy about, by the way. Thank you.
And so we are planning to start the project by the end of the year. So here's what we're doing now. There's still a lot of research that we are doing and finding and just getting educated. We've identified, here's a steering committee that needs to be a part of it. We have initial estimates. We believe in BSEC that we can scrap together the cost of the project implementation by scouring our capital and funding dollars there. We will need to work with the administration to get additional dollars for the marketing and comms of the actual program. And we also need to make sure, and I think you'll see in the appropriations for next year, we believe we need to have two to four individuals, depending upon the cap that we put on the number of IDs we give out per year, but so two to four positions. Right now, we're saying that these positions will go into MONC, but that could change as we figure this out. I mean, MLCFS, I get the names mixed up sometimes.
That's okay.
So at the end of the day, it's an active, formative project for us, and we've got a couple of vendors. We'll get our pricing and solidify the budget once we bring them in. That should happen within the next, like, month and a half. And then from there, we'll pick a vendor and we'll go to the contracting phase, but we believe by the end of the year, we should have a vendor in place and be ready to go.
But I didn't see that there would be two extra positions in MLCFS for this year or your budget for this year.
That won't occur until we get into the appropriations for '26? '26. And those are just some of the things that we have to fill out. That doesn't mean we can't move forward. It just means that we may have to use contractual services until, you know, the '26 appropriations occur.
Well, and you may start with one particular population first, like the people experiencing homelessness, and then go on to the next and to the next. I mean, I'm just thinking that that's one of the things that you might be thinking about in terms of a phased approach?
Well, yes. We're finding that the benefit is great for the adult population and the incentives that other cities have used to incent people to want the ID. I think our research, even like with Chicago just the other day, showed that there's a high demand for it in the adult community. How we go about, you know, rolling it out, we won't get to that until we work with the vendors and see what their presentations are as to giving our population the best way to do that.
Okay, so you're talking about older adults or just Yeah, I mean, I think there's such great, amazing advantages to having this program in the city. And so I think a lot of people will take advantage, not just specific populations. So I understand what you're talking about. Well, good. I look forward to continuing monitoring this with you because this is something that I think has been important that has not occurred yet, but has, again, would be a big deal. So you're going to be picking a vendor and you believe you will actually be able to launch the program in like January?
Yeah, I don't see why we can't unless some crazy, you know, the funding and/or crazy legal
Right, you're scraping up some money within your own coffers, which I appreciate very much. Thank you. But you can also ask for more. So we can get this done in January. Okay, well, we'll certainly keep in touch with you about that.
And we're excited about this as well. We've done a lot of, my chief of staff's done a lot of research on it. We've talked to a lot of different municipalities. So we know enough that we can pull the trigger. We just got to get the right partner with us. And we've also talked to the mayor's office of cable and communications to help think us through the estimate of, how does it take to market something like this and those sorts of things? So we're
Well, just make sure also, though, that the interaction and the interface is going to be in different languages, too. Because the people who, there will be a lot of people who will take advantage of this with, you know, lots of different languages. So we want to have that there as well. So, okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was looking at the budget, page 145, Service 803. And it says here, 145, that there will be positions transferred from DHCD that will work under the guidance of BSEC. Can you describe that a little bit more?
Yes, so we went through a program we call Cost Optimization, where we worked with HCD, DGS, and DOT. And we did a long study to understand their, the technology that they use, the people that supported that technology, the roadmap for that technology, the skill sets of the individuals. And we did an assessment. This was all about, how do we centralize IT in a way that allows us to get economies of scale with infrastructure, but also gives an agency that presence, you know, not a one-size-fit-all, but this resource for agencies? So basically, the people that are transferred to us work for those agencies, doing projects for those agencies. It's just that they are under a different leadership. We know how to lead IT professionals, you know, better than, say, an agency would, because this is our discipline. We have different set of standards, different set of expectations. And that program and pilot has worked extremely well. And I think that's why you see the investment in HCD as well as DOT for some of the projects that we've been working on. Same thing has occurred with DGS, but they just don't have the full breadth of IT projects, opportunities that those other agencies have.
So if I understand correctly, some of the positions that they have for, you know, various projects, you're trying to, you'll have some of those three, let's just say, for DHCD, who will be working under your leadership, but on IT projects in that department? So permit office, for instance, right? And so they would take care of all of the IT needs there, or it would just be those specific projects for enhancement?
They would take care of their needs, but they also have the full weight of BSEC behind them. And they also have, what we do with those agencies, we meet with them on a monthly basis. Their leadership, top leadership, and our top leadership. And we go through their projects. We go through their upcoming needs. We go through the services that we provide and infrastructure. Our customer service, the PC distribution, you know, availability of applications, all those things on a monthly basis so that we make sure our leadership is aligned with what we're working on, how we're working on it, and make sure that we prioritize the work to meet their business needs.
And Councilwoman, I'll just add to Director Carter's points. In the fiscal '24 budget, in the current budget, we began transferring positions from other agencies as part of this pilot. So in the current year's budget, we transferred 17 positions from various city agencies into BSEC. That included transferring positions from the Department of General Services, the Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Department of Transportation. So this is a continuation of a pilot that's already been underway. And just to echo the director's points, there is careful tracking that's being done as part of this pilot. Not only are they checking in on the status with stakeholder agencies, but he's also working closely with my team and other colleagues to really understand what it would look like to do this at scale, which is something that we're contemplating, preparing for as soon as fiscal '26.
So how many positions are being transferred, not just DHCD, but the other agencies this year?
So in the current year's budget, we transferred 17, and I believe in this year's budget, three. So those are coming from HCD and DOT.
And then you're thinking about whether or not there would be other agencies that would also take advantage of this? Is that what you're thinking about?
That's correct, because not all city agencies have been part of the pilot effort.
Because I thought, just following up on that list, because, you know, now BSEC is working also with you all on the tax collection system, the new system, which I'm working, you know, hoping for payment plans. I was told October 25, so that's what I'm going to stick to. So that's not in exchange of personnel. That's working with the department.
Yeah, and I think what this, you know, under Director Carter's leadership, what it's doing is it's making sure that all city agencies have access to the same level of IT services. What we have, if we are operating under a decentralized approach, What we have, if we are operating under a decentralized approach, is that the level of these services and these various software applications really comes down to the investment that individual agencies are able to put into it. And what we've seen is sometimes some agencies are really on top of it, and sometimes, for a variety of reasons, other agencies might get behind. And so by moving in this direction, we're ensuring that we're leveling the playing field, and so agencies are still having those on-the-ground resources in their, you know, in their shops, but what they do is those resources are plugged into the broader, the broader agency of the IT professionals so that they have more support system in order to make sure these projects are successful, and that once we implement a project, that we're maintaining it successfully so that we're sort of safeguarding that investment that we've made and making sure that those new applications are working the way they need to.
And it also sounds like that there, you know, the various programs can either span different agencies or talk to each other, right? And so, great, I appreciate the detail, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's it.
One other thing, it also gives those employees a career path as opposed to just a job. And so we've moved employees from other areas who are interested in doing different things, and they are flourishing and getting, they're not flourishing, they're getting the mentorship that they need.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions? Todd, team, thank you. We're now in recess till 3:00 PM for BMZI.